Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, and can I welcome you to today's Cabinet meeting of Suffolk County Council? This meeting is being webcast live and be available to watch subsequently on the County Council's website. Members of the public and press may also record, film, photograph or broadcast this meeting when the public and the press are not lawfully excluded, provided due courtesy and respect are shown to others in attendance, in line with the council's published guidance. If I could just ask everyone, please, just to check your mobile phones are on silent and also any volume from incoming emails on your laptops is turned right down as well, please. We're not expecting a fire drill today. In the event of the alarm sounding, please leave the chamber by following the fire exit signs at the rear of the chamber, and fire evacuation instructions can also be found on page four of the agenda. councillor West will be here, he's just got somewhere in an official capacity at two o'clock, he should be here by between ten past and quarter past, so if we get to the first item, which is his, we will move to the second item and come back to that and change it around. But apologies for absence, apart from councillor West coming late, do we have any others?
There are no apologies for absence.
Thank you. Any declarations of interests and dispensation by members? That's number received, I will just ask that again when councillor West arrives, just to make sure, from his perspective. Minutes of the previous meeting, Cabinet members have been asked to approve the minutes of the meeting held on the sixteenth of September and the second of October, that are before you in the papers, they start on page five through to seven, and then nine through to fourteen. Is everyone happy that I sign those as a true reflection of the meeting, is that agreed? Agreed, thank you, I'll do that after the meeting. Next item is public questions, do we have any public questions, please?
There are no public questions today.
Thank you very much. Our next item is the standing item, the update from the scrutiny chairman. Councillor Michael Lauders, chairman of the scrutiny committee, will provide an update on the, an overall scrutiny and audit update, over to you.
Thank you, chairman, obviously the papers are in, in your packs today, we're reporting on three scrutiny committees, scrutiny on the twenty fifth of September, the audit committee on the twenty sixth of September, and health scrutiny on the eighth of October. So the scrutiny on the twenty fifth of September looked at the fire, Suffolk Fire and Rescue Services inspection of September last year, and was joined at the meeting by the cabinet member for public health and public protection, the director of fire and public safety and officers from Suffolk Fire and Rescue Services. The committee received a report on the progress against the action plan developed by Suffolk Fire and Rescue Services following the recent inspection. Members also received information about how the rescue service had allocated the additional funding that the cabinet had provided, and a verbal update on the progress of the new control centre. So the committee were pleased that the service had responded to the inspection report in a swift and positive way, and taken ownership of the need to reform. The cultural issues the inspectors identified were predominantly related to communications and leadership rather than EDI issues, and that measures were in place to address them. The committee recommended that cabinet member for public health and public protection that he should continue to lobby government for sufficient resources to maintain the current level of public protection whilst managing the changes ahead due to devolution, and to continue to work to increase diversity and inclusion within the service. The committee decided to review the recommendations in the new year, possibly by means of an in-person update by the Suffolk Fire and Rescue Service. There was also at that meeting a report from the task and finish group, which was set up to look at highways issues, and I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the task and finish group, and particularly the chairman councillor Reader, for managing that, that group and the information that came back to scrutiny. Various recommendations there on page sixteen, I won't read them all, but I think the first one is quite important, that the council should produce a quick guide for traffic regulation orders and speed limit orders, and members made suggestions about how this should be, how this should be included, so various recommendations there, top of page sixteen. Next meeting of scrutiny is on the twentieth of November, when the committee will be assessing the measures in place to ensure continuity of the council services in the event of a loss of IT or other infrastructure, fairly poignant, I think, at the moment, concerns what's happened in the last couple of months in various areas. The audit committee met on twenty sixth of September, and the chairman councillor Spicer is here to my right, if there's any questions, and they were updated on the external audit of Suffolk County Council's twenty four twenty five accounts, which had been delayed due to staffing issues at Ernst &amp; Young. The committee reviewed the council's performance management arrangements, noting continued improvements in data presentation and the importance of accuracy in reporting. The committee also reviewed the annual report of complaints, comments, sorry, compliments, complaints and comments, probably the wrong way around, and local government and social care ombudsman, activity for twenty four twenty five. Members welcomed the positive progress in adult social care and the increase in compliments within children and young people's services. The committee also received and agreed the Suffolk Fire and Rescue Authority's statement of assurance for twenty four twenty five, recommending improvements to future reporting including clearer road traffic data. The internal audit and counter fraud services half-year update confirmed sufficient resources for a robust year-end opinion, though future capacity may require review as devolution advances. The committee remains dedicated to strong oversight of financial governance and risk management practices, ensuring statutory and regulatory obligations are met and promoting continuous improvement. The last report is the health scrutiny committee on the eighth of October, which had an update on the strategies for development of dental services in Suffolk, and the implementations, sorry, the implications for dentistry of recent and proposed changes in the national health services policy. Again, various recommendations there, but the committee commended the progress that had been made towards improving the availability and accessibility of dental services in Suffolk to the benefit of both patients and the workforce, and decided to review the progress of the dental reforms and the implementation of the committee's recommendations in a year's time. The committee recommended that communications to the public should continue to be aligned with the messaging being promoted by public health, emphasising the well-established link between good dental health and general good health, and in particular highlighting the positive impacts on dental health and general health of giving up smoking and vaping, so various recommendations there at the bottom of page eighteen, chairman. And finally, their next meeting will be in the new year, on the twenty first of January twenty twenty six, when they will be looking to receive an update from Norfolk and Suffolk Mental Health Foundation Trust, and consider the sustainability of pharmacy services in Suffolk. Thank you, chairman, happy to take any questions if there are any.
Yeah, thank you very much, and you've covered a lot of ground there, and a lot of different things that have been covered, so thank you for running through all of that. Happy to open it up to cabinet colleagues who want to come in and comment, yes, councillor Wiles.
Thank you, chairman, and good afternoon to everyone. I would like to personally thank both the scrutiny and the audit committee for their constructive and very helpful input. Suffolk Fire and Rescue Service look forward to updating the scrutiny committee in the new year on both their recommendations and further progress against the action plan. I'd also like to join with Suffolk Fire and Rescue Service in extending thanks to the audit committee for their consideration and approval of the statement of assurance covering the period from April twenty twenty four to the thirty first of March twenty twenty five, and we look forward to the publication of that document on the county council's website. Thank you very much indeed.
Thanks, I mean, there are lots of different areas covered, I was particularly interested in the dentistry, which obviously has had huge amounts of, of attention, which is beyond our control, but it was good to see scrutiny, health scrutiny, actually spending a bit of time looking on something like that, so thank you for the work for that, and then thank you also for the work that's done around Suffolk Fire and Rescue Service, and obviously looking at the TROs and the various proposals there. Okay, and thank you, no other comments at this stage, but obviously we'll pick that up and take those away. Okay, so what we're going to do now is move straight to agenda item seven, rather than agenda item six, so we're going to move to agenda item seven, to give councillor West a few more minutes to get here, which is the relevant representations in respect to the National Grid Transmission Norwich to Tilbury proposals, I'm going to hand over to councillor Rout.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, the paper before us today is designed to address the issues raised by the submitted DCO or Development Consent Order for National Grid's Norwich to Tilbury pylon run. Before I go into the detail, I would like to thank, take this opportunity to thank our specialist officers who are dealing with this huge project, as well as our NSIP and wider planning team. Our opposition to this scheme is long-held and well-established, we along with neighbouring counties have led on calls for the project to be paused and for alternatives either underground or offshore to be considered. It is a scheme that's being driven forward by the Labour Government and Ed Miliband's misguided decision to bring forward the decarbonisation target for the electricity grid from twenty thirty five to twenty thirty, were it not for this, a pause would be entirely possible. Moreover, the scheme is exacerbating the gold rush of vast amounts of solar schemes that our county faces, with developers scanning the proposed pylon swath for prospective sites. Despite our overall opposition to the scheme, our officers have tried to work collaboratively where possible with National Grid, it's therefore important to note that this cabinet paper at recommendation D recognises that changes have been made to the scheme alignment to date, which should the scheme proceed despite our opposition and despite our objection, will partially reduce some of the impact. Turning to the cabinet paper, Mr Chairman, the recommendation it sets out falls into two parts, not only does it recommend that council lodge a formal objection to the project with the examining authority on the basis that there are significant and important matters of detail which have not been adequately addressed, but separately it sets out to the public and the applicant that Suffolk County Council's clear preference is for alternative options that have been published by the electricity systems operator, such as high voltage direct current undergrounding, or if it were practical and deliverable, an offshore solution, being mindful of course of the impact on the Suffolk coast. Therefore, the paper recommends that cabinet formally and strongly request National Grid and OFGEM recognising the applicant's licence obligations, pause the Norwich to Tilbury proposals, to enable the effective consideration of offshore or high voltage direct current underground alternatives, and to continue to raise with council, raise the council's concerns with government regarding the cumulative impacts resulting from this development and other energy projects in the county. Before dealing with the substance of the paper, I'll take the opportunity to address some of the concerns relating to the adequacy of consultation response of this and other councils. There is an important distinction to be made here between a wholly robust consultation, which considers all the alternative options to the proposed scheme, and a scheme which passes the statutory tests for an adequate consultation, as defined in statute at section fifty five of the Planning Act two thousand and eight. As set out in its formal response to the planning inspector on fifteenth of September twenty twenty five, Suffolk County Council is satisfied that the project has met the statutory tests at sections forty two, forty seven and forty eight of the Planning Act. Furthermore, on the thirtieth of June twenty twenty five, the planning inspector asked the applicant to ensure that its consultation report explained how the applicant had complied with the gunning principles when undertaking this consultation. Therefore, the council considers that compliance of the consultation with the gunning principles has clearly been made a matter for the secretary of state in discussion with the applicant. The secretary of state has publicly addressed the question of the applicant's compliance with the gunning principles, and in accepting the application has taken full responsibility for compliance of the consultation with those principles. However, the county council maintains its position that the applicant has not demonstrated that a serious, that the serious adverse impacts of the current proposal are necessary, because there has not been a thorough and robust appraisal of alternatives, including offshore and high voltage direct current undergrounding options. That reflects the realities of the timescale as to when consented and proposed generation projects will require connection. Setting aside these issues, however, the county council recognises that the examining authority must deal with the application that is now before it, and the council as a statutory consultee must seek to address the substance of that proposal and the substantive shortcomings of the scheme. In headline terms, the shortcomings are that there is insufficient undergrounding of both the proposed project, the four hundred KV pylon line, and of existing UKPN infrastructure, the undergrounding of which can substantially offset the harm of the project, that the proposals are not presented to date, that the proposals presented to date are not robust in terms of assessments, outcomes and mitigation, including cumulative impacts with other energy projects, and the assessment of cumulative impacts on the wellbeing of communities. For example, Mr Chairman, working hours and highways issues have not been satisfactorily resolved, the proposals for working hours include Sundays and bank holidays, and this is clearly unacceptable, residual landscape impacts on the Waveney Valley and on the cluster of heritage assets in the Gipping Valley remain unaddressed, the previous option for undergrounding in the Waveney Valley has now fallen away, and to date, no proposals to offset the significant residual harm to this sensitive landscape have been proposed by the applicant. Likewise, undergrounding of low voltage cables in the Gipping Valley to reduce the harm to heritage assets has not been forthcoming. In relation to the Dedden Vale national landscape, the application has yet to address the issues of the secretary of state's duty to further the purposes of designated landscapes, specifically the Dedden Vale, in regard to the Dedden Vale, the council considers that a package of landscape enhancement measures to support the management plan objectives is required to meet this duty. Likewise, similar measures to offset the harm to the Waveney Valley caused by the failure of the applicant to be able to progress undergrounding is also reasonable and appropriate, given the evidence presented by the council and the applicant's own efforts to secure undergrounding of a scheme in this area in accordance with National Policy Statement EN five in relation to sensitive areas outside protected landscapes, where there is a high potential for widespread and significant adverse landscape and/or visual impacts. I would also highlight, Mr Chairman, the great efforts of our officers, in particular Graham Gumby, who's sat behind me, the efforts that he in particular has gone to, to make representations on and request changes to protect the vast array of private airfields that are found along the pylon route, I know this work is appreciated by enthusiasts, communities and councillors alike. Mr Chairman, in summary, the impact of the construction of the scheme and the impact of the operation of the scheme have not yet been adequately addressed by the applicant, both in terms of assessment and mitigation, this underpins the council's relevant representations to the examining authority and the council's objection to the scheme. The paper also recommends at GNH that we authorise the executive director for growth highways and infrastructure in consultation with the cabinet member to make amendments to the draft relevant representations, and to make further submissions to the examination in public and to the secretary of state until a decision is made, therefore it's possible for any additional matters raised today to be incorporated. In addition, it authorises us to continue working with National Grid with the aim to secure improvements on matters highlighted as areas of concern. We anticipate the examination for the project starting early next year, and that, Mr Chairman, gives me an opportunity to correct paragraph twenty two of our paper, which should set out, we expect examination January to July twenty twenty six, not twenty twenty five, and a decision in January twenty twenty seven, not January twenty twenty six. To conclude, Mr Chairman, we remain fundamentally opposed to the Norwich to Tilbury pylon proposal, we do not believe that underground or offshore alternatives have been properly considered, we remain opposed to the government's target to decarbonise the electricity transmission grid by twenty thirty, which is driving forward this and other infrastructure such as solar farms that desecrate our landscape, impact tourism, reduce property prices, choke our highways network, and damage the mental wellbeing of our residents. For the sake of Suffolk and rural counties like it, the government should hit pause on their decarbonisation goal and instruct National Grid and OFGEM to pause this scheme. However, presuming it proceeds as planned to examination, this paper and the attached relevant representations clearly set out our objection to the scheme as proposed to the planning inspectorate, thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for setting that out so clearly, happy to open it up to cabinet colleagues who wish to come in, yes councillor Chambers.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, as many of you know, this will have a direct impact on my division, and I want to highlight some serious concerns surrounding the Norwich to Tilbury project and its impact on Branford and the Gipping Valley. Branford has become a focal point for energy infrastructure in Suffolk, the substation already hosts multiple grid connections and now faces yet another expansion. Taken together, these schemes are overwhelming for local residents and the landscapes alike, the area is being asked to shoulder far more than its fair share of, of national infrastructure, the Gipping Valley remains one of Suffolk's most sensitive landscapes and a place of beauty and heritage, and yet this proposal would drive a line of fifty metre pylons straight through it, cutting across traditional fields and valley views once recognised for a special, for their special character. The council's own report warns, warns this would cause a serious and irreversible harm, Branford itself, the growing cluster of pylons, solar farms and cables is turning the valley into an industrial corridor, and we need real investment, real investment in mitigation, undergrounding, landscape planting and rationalisation of existing lines, not more of the same visual and environmental damage. We all support cleaner energy, but this scheme is premature, poorly thought out, alternatives such as offshoring fully underground routes must be properly explored before consent is given, some are questioned is if, if this, or how much more can Branford and Gipping Valley be expected to endure if this does increase the number of solar farms before someone finally says enough is enough?
Thank you councillor Chambers, and I, I think you set out quite clearly in your question, the, that the strain that your area is undergoing in the face of a glut of, of green, in inverted commas, infrastructure, and I, and I know you have been very forthright in joining your parishes opposing a myriad of, of solar farms that have been at a town and country planning act level, so the sub NSIP threshold. In terms of my personal opinion of what they should be expected to take, I would say no more, but in terms of the reality of the policy landscape that we are operating in under the current government, I think that the floodgates are opened, that the Norwich to Tilbury pylon run, we know is attracting solar investors in terms of their search corridor for new schemes, so, so I'm afraid should the project proceed, it is likely that it will enable future schemes simply because there is redundant capacity on that line, and National Grid will want to sell that redundant capacity.
Thank you, and, and much of what councillor Chambers said, I could take out the name of his division and put Thredling in there, although we don't quite have a valley, to the same scale, I suspect, but, but I think for me, that this is, this, a lot of this skirts my division, but it does cut across it further down, particularly in the, in the stonums, and what I would really like to see is actually this whole council, all political parties come out and ask the government to move that decarbonisation target for the benefit of our residents, and also I'd like to see this all come out and say we believe solar farms on prime agricultural land is absolutely wrong, no one should support it, because certainly none of my residents support it, and I'm not hearing anyone, or any meeting, when I go to parish councils last night, and I get more tonight, no one ever says to me, we want more solar farms across our agricultural land, it's quite the opposite, so it'd be nice if we could maybe think about having one motion where we all agree and come behind that unanimously going forward, but that's for another day. We've, we've had motions skirting around it, but not, I'd say we could go harder, if we've, if we had the six month break, so, so thank you councillor for this, I wholly endorse it, and I think, I don't think we can be too strong on such a topic. Councillor Wiles.
Thank you, chairman, and thank you councillor Rout, you touched very briefly on public health, as you will know, public health has recommended targeted monitoring of health and wellbeing outcomes within the community during this process, I just wondered if you've got any experience of the pressures put within our communities?
Yeah, absolutely, and I don't think, it's a really important point that you raise, councillor Wiles, I don't, I don't think you can understate the toll that this project and other projects are placing on the mental and emotional wellbeing of our residents, the uncertainty of course doesn't help whether or not a project will proceed, we have seen house prices fall, we've seen sales fall through, with something like the Norwich to Tilbury pylon run, that's, that's quite concentrated, sort of along the pylon swath, but i- if you look at other solar schemes, you're, and certainly projects like the proposed Eco Power, one that's currently in the offering around the I area, there, because at that early stage, they draw a red line boundary that isn't well-defined, you see property sales falling through and, and prices falling quite dramatically, so there, there is a myriad of mental and emotional impacts that our communities feel, and I don't think we can take them too seriously, by that, I mean, I don't think we can, you know, understate how seriously we should take them, the, the impacts are real and they are being felt across our, across our communities.
Any other cabinet members wish to come in, yeah councillor Chench?
Thank you, I just wanted to also add my voice of concern about solar farms, and as you alluded, this particular proposal could encourage a really bad cumulative effect, have we got any idea what the worst scenario could be, or how big it might become?
It's, it's difficult to be absolutely precise, and what you can look at is the sort of the number of projects that have been given connection offers, or, or those coming forward, that process has changed slightly in, in recent months, but if you look around Yaxley, there was about thirteen thousand acres with a connection offer, not all of that will come forward, and I think looking across Suffolk, you could probably quite easily say that about twenty thousand acres of, of solar is, at an NSIP scale is, is in the offering, and that's not including schemes below that fifty megawatt NSIP threshold, so a vast, vast amount for an area that is renowned for its agriculture and for its food production.
Anyone else wish to come in, no, happy to open it up to others, councillor Stringer first?
Yes, thank you. This is probably one of the most important responses to any planning, someone seeking planning permission, that will probably see come through here, and we've seen things like nuclear power stations come through as well, so I, I think... So I think this is quite important as a response to make sure it's as concise and as focused as it possibly can be on those planning issues that are needing to be addressed in this. I just wanted to be a tad parochial in terms of, and a bit of history. There has already been motions go through this council that have tried to address the issue of solar farms, and in fact, I was the one that proposed one called Roof Before Rural. I think it was over two years ago. So we already have debated this in this council, and I think no one would disagree that prime agricultural land should never be taken out of agriculture for whatever use, be it solar farming, people to run horses on or whatever. Taking prime agricultural land out of production is not a good idea. I'll speak a little bit more parochial now. The area of Upper Gipping that I've served will be hugely affected by this, if this were to be given the go-ahead. Not because those that live there are all nimby's that don't want to see any development, et cetera, et cetera, but because we've already had a three hundred percent increase in energy travelling through Upper Gipping. There has already been a grid upgrade that we've had happen in the last five years. There are now four cables sitting on each of the arms where there used to be one. So actually, we've already had a grid upgrade and all of the hassle that went with that on the existing pylon line that runs through Upper Gipping. This also, in terms of if we need to address what we use for solar and where we put stuff, we really need to have a land use framework that actually identifies what we're going to do where. We haven't got that, so we have to work within the framework we've got. And I want to try and address something that's in the draft documents that we saw back in the earlier consultations, which feel like an absolute lifetime ago, and what's now in our response here. And I hear the portfolio holder saying that there will be further matters will need to be incorporated as we go forward, but they will not be incorporated in a public forum where people can, like justice, it not only needs to be done, it needs to be seen to be done. There are some changes in the order being sought now in this document and the original draft we sought, and that causes my community quite a lot of alarm, because the differences are the incorporation of small feeder roads into the pylon route in the development consent order that were not being sought earlier on. That causes alarm, because many of these roads, like Willow Lane, Cotton and Daisy Green Lane in Wickham Skies, we cannot get a waste freighter up there to collect people's rubbish and recycling. Yet these roads are now being sought to be delivering a pylon route. Pylons are not grown, you don't put a bit of steel in the ground, water it, and it becomes a pylon. There is an awful lot of engineering and heavy engineering has to be done to build a pylon. So I would have quite liked to have seen almost a detailed objection on highways grounds alone, that the highway network being sought to carry out this work is frankly not up to the job.
I'm going to push you towards the question.
And that is the question. Can, I was hoping there would be an itemised one, so will that be the further matters incorporated? Will that be a list of those roads that simply cannot take the HGV traffic that's being sought as part of this development consent order? Thank you.
Does he? Really? No, thank you councillor Stringer. And first of all, can I just start off by thanking you and through your other role in Mid Suffolk District Council for all the, I think it's important to recognise that the councils have worked well together on the response to this project, and in particular Bron Curtis at Mid Suffolk has been excellent in making sure that our work is joined up and we echo the same relevant points. You're absolutely right that a motion came to this council, it might be time to revisit that, but you are right that we set out quite firmly our opposition to solar on our best agricultural land. We might disagree on what our best agricultural land is, you might say grade one, I might say grade one, two and three A, the officers behind me might say grade one and two, but I think in sentiment, we're aligned that the best land should be protected. In terms of the roads you highlighted, I think this arose from letters that landed within the community that have been slightly misunderstood. So the roads you refer to, particularly around Cotton, as I understand it, aren't for construction but are for inspection and maintenance, and that's why they're looking at those smaller roads, but it isn't intended, as we understand it and as the officers behind me understand it, that those roads are to be used for construction. Graham, did you want to come in there?
Yeah, taking the, consulted the highways authority for a conversation yesterday councillor, and it is as councillor Routh says, we believe that many of the small lines on the map, the small roads are really for that access to the towers when it's built, rather than, they're not primary accesses. And because the concept of this proposal is a central haul road, which brings in its own issues, because it's three million tonnes of aggregate in and out, and obviously, there are, as I think we discussed yesterday, there are a crossing of existing roads as well, and that's a detailed matter that would be done and discharge requirements, but that would, in certain circumstances, entail gates and, you know, signalled junctions and stuff like that. So primarily, I think the anxiety about the use of multiple small roads is probably, you know, it's not as bad as it might at first seem.
Just to add, can I just add to that before councillor Stringer comes back? Very happy to meet with you outside this meeting to look in detail at those roads, but it was raised directly with me by one of your residents with a road adjacent to one of their properties, and we sought that clarification on that basis. But we can take the list of roads away and look at that, and very happy to ensure that you have the reassurance you need.
Sorry, in planning terms, I'm a simple soul. I read what's being sought in the planning commission and I look at the red line, because that's the legal ask. And unless that differentiation is made in that ask and that order, or we make it for them, I think we owe that to the anxiety being spread, let alone, because we would not want to see any of those HGVs that need to bring those thousands of tonnes of steel and aggregate in to be caught on any of those roads, because it would be disastrous.
We've certainly had that clarification, but we can try and get it in writing, Graham? Yeah, thank you.
Just my point on the motion was, I was thinking more along the lines of a new government with new policies and do we need to make a new mark? But anyway, we can discuss that another day. Next, councillor Fairclough-Mutton.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. And in conjunction with what has been said already, the Reform group absolutely disagrees with the placement of solar farms on prime agricultural land or any green space. They should be on roofs or brownfield sites first and foremost. Question for councillor Routh, of course. I had a look through the June twenty twenty-two non-statutory consultation response that the council agreed, and on page eight, specifically one point one eight and one point two zero, the figures were quoted that suggested the greater degree of offshoring would be twice the level of the smaller projects that was proposed. I see that there is a lot of obiturian aspirations, it's very clear in paragraph fifty-four on page thirty-nine of the paper today, that we do want to see offshoring and undergrounding as viable options, and quite rightly so. I wondered, have we actually looked into the financial implications of doing either of those things at a greater degree? What are those figures, please, and why were they not included in the report? Thank you.
So we have previously commissioned somebody called Andy Heinz to do precisely that work, and it was his work that led to the argument that this project could be paused fundamentally, that the needs case on which it's predicated, the offshore wind in the main back then that was coming forward, wouldn't come on stream until twenty thirty-four, rather than, I think, the twenty thirty that this project is targeting. And I think that alongside some other reviews by grid themselves, looked at the cost. It is very, very difficult for this council to commission anyone to look at the costs of an offshore grid, not least because nobody really agrees on what they mean by an offshore grid. You could mean offshore links, like C-Link, so that takes it from point A to point B. You could mean offshore converter stations and everything sort of plugging in, like a great offshore extension lead, if you like, as James Cartlitt refers to it. But there is no, I would say, unified view on where that project would be, what it would look like and where it would make landfall. And I think one of the things that gives me pause around an offshore grid and why I think undergrounding would be my personal preference for our part of the east of England, is that whilst an offshore grid might be seen as this great panacea, it would have to make landfall at strategic points along the east coast, and those would most likely be areas like Sizewell, where there is already a great concentration of impacts. I'm not saying that an offshore grid couldn't be part of the solution, I just say we'd need to treat it with some caution around its impact on the Suffolk coast in particular, given the concentration of energy around the Albra, Sizewell, Friston area. We did have the comparative costings of undergrounding versus overhead lines, I think it went from eighteen to one at one point to six to one at a later date, but I think we can fish out those reports, Graham. We probably still have the reports from Engat and the Heinz review that looked at the timings and the needs case.
Councillor Fleming. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, if you follow the link on the bottom of the report, it takes you to the S C C webpage, and the Heinz report that councillor Routh mentions is on the webpage. And it is primarily on economic grounds, but obviously, economics is not the only criteria, as grid's own guidance states as well.
Thank you. Councillor Fleming.
Yes, thank you, thank you very much. I represent the Hartesmere Division, through which a significant part of the pylon line would travel. And I have obviously received many representations from parish councils and anxious residents about it already, I won't go into the details. But I wanted, on this paper, I wanted to really focus on the, in bullet point B, the relationship between the proposed project and other renewable projects, solar projects I mentioned, and the assessment and management of cumulative effects, including mental wellbeing. The costs of this project that went into the cost benefit analysis did not take into account the indirect socio-economic costs to local communities and individuals affected by it. I don't expect there was a mandatory requirement for it to do so, but the costs of the scheme and the indirect effects of the solar farms that apparently would spawn are going to be massive if this is allowed to go through. There are harms already happening to the tourist industry, people are giving up their businesses because they are in the firing line of either solar farms, proposed solar farms or pylons. People are unable to sell their homes, people have been told, in some cases, that their homes are actually unsalable. The mental cost of this project and of the renewable programme is very, very substantial, and yet it really doesn't figure here in the assessment. And I would like to know whether we can add something to our report that strengthens our concerns over this particular topic. The other point I'd like to make on the paper and question is in paragraph fifty, page thirty-nine, the needs case. I think it may be a little, what I would call, out of date to say that we are so dependent on renewable energy that we need such an intricate grid system in this country. In case anyone hasn't been reading papers and scientific journals and what's happening in other parts of the world, the economic case for solar and wind is falling apart quite fast.
Just to be fair, I am going to have to push you to a question, please.
Yes, my question is, can we please modify the language in this paragraph? The reason for this is to transmit energy effectively from a source to the point of use. It is not doing this effectively by taking into account solar farms and lots of grid interconnections. Can we please modify this to be less reliant on a renewable system and more anticipatory of a nuclear baseload system?
Thank you, councillor Routh.
So where to start? I think I absolutely agree, councillor Fleming, with your sentiment that we should be less reliant on offshore wind and solar and more reliant on nuclear. But the needs case for this scheme, as set out in that paragraph, is predicated upon what is in the pipeline, what is currently and what is being proposed. And that is, as you've seen, a glut of offshore wind and indeed solar. So I think it would be difficult for us to say in our relevant representations that we think that the needs case for this should be based on some future government which isn't yet elected, with policies that don't yet exist and haven't yet been implemented. We might think that there needs to be that policy shift, but we can't respond to a project that has been proposed based on reality with a response that's based on wishful hypotheticals.
And can you elaborate a bit on the socio-economic impacts, please?
So in contrast with, I think Branford to Twinsted, and I'm going to look around behind me in a second for a nod from Graham Gumby, tourism, for example, is considered in scope for this scheme, it wasn't for Branford to Twinsted, I am getting that nod. But in terms of wider impacts, I think there will be a sort of a package, a financial package agreed associated with the scheme, negotiated throughout the D C O, and I think, as ever, should it proceed, will be robust in arguing for the maximum level of, if you like, compensation and mitigation. But in terms of strengthening that, I think it is probably difficult now for us to ask for things that weren't in scope earlier in the project to be in scope now, Graham? Did you want to come in on any of that?
Yeah, so in terms of the anticipatory need, I think that's something, I think councillor Routh's mentioned, the scheme's kind of predicated on planned, existing and planned need. I think the situation is, is that there's offshore wind farms and solars that have got consent, and once they're developed, I think you'd potentially be in a situation, as we were with Branford, Twinsted, where, you know, they wouldn't be able to transmit the power. It's happened, as I understand it, in Scotland, and that's obviously something that grid are seeking to avoid in this area. And just going on to the tourism, yes, we successfully argued that tourism is scoped into the environmental statement, and we, at this present time, we will be developing our arguments through the examination to try and, you know, achieve whatever we can in terms of mitigation in that respect.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to come in? Yes, councillor Bridgeman.
We're on, that's it. I'd like an assurance, really, from councillor Routh and from the council, that you'll keep fighting proposals for big energy and solar, and if they do go through, that you'll force every benefit or mitigation you can for the people of Suffolk. Sometimes I feel a little bit, I should put more effort into this. I'm in an urban area where maybe I don't see a lot of this, and it would be very easy for me to say, it's not going to affect me. I'm here to represent my area in Suffolk, and this does affect lots of Suffolk, so don't give up the good fight. Yes, we may have to accept some things, but it does clearly look like Suffolk is just the drop area for every sort of spade shovel going, and we've got a beautiful county. Don't want to see it taken over completely. I understand that we have to take a bit, but not as much as we should do, so yeah.
I would urge you to talk to your members of parliament who have the ear of government. Councillor Routh.
Little to add, Mr Chairman, obviously, I can give councillor Bridgeman that reassurance that we will continue to fight, we're taking our objection into the examination, as we have have done with other projects and in the past we've taken that objection as far as the Secretary of State and you're absolutely right to highlight the level of ask of our part of the UK, I think the east of England will be generating upwards of thirty percent of the nation's energy, it uses just six percent, it's a massive net contributor, so if we are to play host to all of this infrastructure despite our opposition, despite our objections, then we need to be adequately compensated for that.
Thanks for that, anyone else? Nope, councillor Rout, can you just remind Cabinet what we're being asked to decide today please?
Yes, Mr Chairman, if Cabinet could turn their attention to pages thirty-three and thirty-four of their agendas, I won't read it all out, but it's number four A through I.
Okay, Cabinet, are we in favour of that recommendation? Can we have a show of hands please? Thank you. Okay, thank you very much for that and we're just going to be two minutes, just so, we just need to rejig something, but then we'll go straight back to agenda item six, so literally we're just going to break for five minutes quickly. Okay, so thank you for that and welcome back everyone. We've now been joined by councillor West as well, so councillor West, just to be correct, can I just ask, do you have any declarations of interest or dispensations regarding anything on the agenda today?
No Chair, I don't.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so we'll now go to agenda item six, which is the Suffolk Local Access Forum Annual Report and I'll hand over to councillor West in a minute, but I do believe that, Mr Hall, it's your eightieth birthday today.
Yes.
So thank you for joining us and on your eightieth. I think that shows real dedication to join Suffolk County Council Cabinet meeting on your eightieth birthday and we're very grateful, I'll now hand over to councillor West.
Yeah, I'm sorry to have dropped you in it by the way. So this is the annual airing of the Local Access Forums Annual Report for their work until the end of July this year. For those that have been to one of these meetings before where we've had this item, just a reminder that the Local Access Forum is appointed by the county council but acts independently of it, has a whole range of interested parties, there's also a county council rep in councillor Spicer and a district council rep, but makes comment on the various issues to do with local access. As always, the report is very much that of the forum and I'll pass over to Mr Hall in a moment to go through what the topics have been in the last year and at the end of the presentation, as usual, we'll have questions, but it is very much the Access Forums report, not for me to sort of steal your presentation Barry, but perhaps if I pass over to you and you can take the reins.
Thank you Chairman and councillor West for your introductions. I'll start my report with some good news, after many years since it's approved by the Planning Inspector, I think it's probably about seven, six or seven years, the railway crossing at Gipsy Lane Needham Market is now closed and the diversion route using a culvert under the railway is now open. Your head. The Access Forum members were able to walk the new route at their meeting at Needham Market in April. County council staff spent a lot of time and effort negotiating with the landowner and Network Rail to fully achieve this positive outcome and we thank them very much. Some progress has also been made on closing and diverting other foot crossings across railway lines which were approved following Network Rail's Transport and Works Order Inquiry also several years ago. However, from a presentation made to the Local Access Forum at Network Rail's request, it would appear that they are likely to be willing to forward a further Transport and Works Order to close up to eighteen other foot crossings of not only the Ipswich to Norwich Main Line, but the Ipswich-Saxmundam Line which related to the additional use of the latter by increased size will see rail traffic. We hope that Network Rail will consult more closely with the authority prior to submitting any order, which they didn't do last time, and eventually Local Access Forum will be scrutinising any consultation closely. National Strategic Infrastructure Projects have also taken up agenda space at our meetings and we have submitted responses to all consultations, not only the national grid schemes, but also the case of Seelink to the Planning Inspectorate. This will use not only the proposed Friston substation with its main input, but its main impact will be on the Saxmundam area with the proposed converter station having a major impact on the public rights of way in the area. Slough has asked for improved connectivity and mitigation, especially between the planned Saxmundam Garden Village development with the retention of a proposed Hawley's Road next to the site as part of this. The proposed Lion Link is also of concern as although it will link to the Friston substation, it approaches from a different direction causing further disturbance to rights of way. In all of the NSIPS with the proposed network, including the proposed network Norries to Tilbury overhead power lines, Local Access Forum has always stressed the need for early and continuing liaison with public rights of way staff to ensure temporary and permanent diversions are properly documented, that mitigation and legacy measures are put in place and county council staff time on schemes is compensated for. We also question the lack of coordination between the large schemes which will impact a wide area over many years. It doesn't help when information relating to rights of way has not, have not their own section in submission documents, but are covered in different ones, causing frustration to the public and county council officers. Solar farms are an increasing issue with public rights of way, we are not aware of any progress on the Sunnicar approved scheme and consultation on two other NSIP schemes in northern Suffolk, White Elm and Eco Par seem to be paused, possibly waiting for changes in the consultation process. What is also worrying under a recent meeting is a paper listing over twenty solar farms between thirty megawatts to the threshold of fifty megawatts which are processed by the district councils. In many instances, they have public rights of way implications, but no prior discussions have taken with the rights of way or green access team, ignoring the county council and Local Access Forum position statement on rights of way and solar farms. Staff time is taken up as site visits and providing a response to the district councils. Now for more positive news, work on the establishment of the King Charles III England Coast Path is becoming a reality. Shotley Gate to Felix Oak Ferry has been opened for a year and the alternative route into Ipswich has been worked out for those not wanting to cross the river via the Orwell Bridge. The stretch between Felix Oak Ferry and Borty via Wilfrid Bridge at Melton is now complete. On the coast, the stretch between Albra and Hopton is also open. Recently it's been confirmed that the secretary has signed off all the relevant Suffolk sections, including the Store Estry and the rest of the Suffolk coast, including the Blighs Estry and the Ben Aker Broad area. The project team have done an excellent job to date despite many of the conditions imposed by natural England on their work. With funding limited, the Local Access Forum welcomes the efforts made by the council to improve the cycling, walking and bridaway infrastructure by bidding for external funding from section one oh six agreements and community infrastructure levy and other government schemes. It is particularly important that when there are large housing and employment applications, that improvements for cycle and pedestrian links throughout the sites to existing facilities are looked at pre-application. An opportunity is also offered to Local Access Forum to become involved, as has happened at the Felix Oak Garden neighbourhood, as within our membership we have subgroups who can spend some time looking at such proposals. Local Access has also been made aware of how work that has been going on to update the definitive map and statement is now close to be finished, it gives up and updated to date mapping which is accessible for every parish on the county council website and can be easily updated to show changes in the future. Earlier this year, the Local Access Forum was consulted on the authorities' plans for improvements to the A12 between Seven Hills and Woodslay and Melton. We welcomed the proposals and made some suggestions for how access for pedestrians and cyclists could be improved. I understand that a planning application has now been made and look forward to commenting on the final schemes. Finally, I would like to thank the support that the county council gives to the Local Access Forum and the help and support it receives from the public rights of way and green access teams in setting up meetings and providing update papers for meetings. As I've said before, based on what I hear from chairs of other local access forums in the region, some other local authorities, quite often unitaries, do not seem to take the same interest in supporting their forums, not appreciating that as statutory representation we're also independent and particularly in response to NSIPS can add additional pressure to the need for public rights of way, green access and that mitigation and legacy meanings for these important communities should be a necessity, not an option. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, councillor West, anything you should add?
Yeah, just a few short comments before I pass back to you Chair, so to thank the Chair, Mr Hall, for his and the forum's continued work throughout the year and obviously good news on the Needham Market crossing and also the England coastal path and I think most people would share your comments around the NSIPS where we all seem to be at one. Mr Woodin, Andrew Woodin, the council's rights of way development improvement manager is also here to answer any questions and on the issue that Mr Hall referred to which can be seen on paragraph twenty-three, under, page twenty-three even, paragraph C, which refers to the Network Rail proposals to bring forward and close up to eighteen level crossings, this is not something that has yet been consulted on, but because I think it will in time be of interest to members in the room, I've asked Andrew Woodin to do a note that we can share with everybody in the next few days rather than have this afternoon sort of, because many people will have an interest in it and the questions this afternoon should be very much focused on the Access Forums work. So Chair, can I pass back to you, it might be good to start with councillor Spicer, who's the county council rep on the forum, if she's...
I've got some cabinet members who wish to come as well.
Of course, yeah.
So bringing councillor Smith next, then I'll make sure of bringing councillor Spicer.
Mr Hall, first of all, congratulations on your very special birthday. If we'd known in advance, I would have levered some money from my cabinet colleagues and got you a birthday cake and I'm sorry we haven't done that and I can't think of a better place to spend one's eightieth birthday than in Endeavour House, so thank you very much. I normally ask you a question about Sizewell C because it's right on the border of the area that I represent, but the news is relatively good and relatively positive there, so I'm not going to do that this afternoon, but you did mention the Ipswich to Saxmundam railway line and some crossings or some closings of some foot crossings there and I'm interested to know more about that because I live within fifty yards of that railway line and I know what goes on along there and during the day there's no extra capacity really for Sizewell C traffic, therefore it's been put on overnight. Well surely overnight trains are not going to be held as a reason for closing these foot crossings, there's surely nobody about at night who is going to try and cross the railway line, so I'd like to know more details, not necessarily today, but I would appreciate it if I could be kept informed of what's happening so I can at least put in my views. And secondly, I just wish... And secondly, I just wish to comment on what you said about the Saxmundam converter station. And I absolutely agree with you that it is going to have a major impact on rights of way. Where it's actually built is absolutely on the boundary line between councillor Reed's division and mine, so we're both interested in that. Mine is compounded by the Lion Link complications, but we are concerned about rights of way disruptions. And we would both, I'm here talking for councillor Reed, but I'm sure he'll agree with me, would like to be kept very much informed so that our views, we can channel in the views of our constituents. But thank you very much for all you and your forum do.
Thank you for that. The network rail, they asked to come and tell us about them. There is a paper which went to our January meeting of this year and Andrew is going to circulate it to members so you know which list of these eighteen crossings they're looking at. They say nothing has been formed, there's no formal consultations, but obviously once that comes into effect, we will be making our comments. As I said before, hopefully they learnt their lesson from their last transport works order where they went in, straight in without even bothering to consult the county council. So it's really work in progress. Until we get a formal one, we can't do much about that. Regarding, what's the other one? Was the?
The converter station.
The converter, yes. I mean, it's horrendous the size of these things and it's fairly prominent on a hill. And it, there's a lot of public rights of way that cross there. I say we've made representation, every consultation has been made and now they, those, they've all now been sent to the Planning Inspectorate, so our responses. But the letters are also, we have sent out in the consultation are also on with our papers which are in, which you can access through the website.
Councillor Rowan.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. And I'd just like to echo the thanks that councillor West set out to Mr Hall and the Local Access Forum around their response to and contribution to the NSIP work that this council does. I'd like to apologise for moving the agenda around on your birthday, so you had to sit through the Norwich to Tilbury discussion and the discussion around solar farms. But I think it was actually important that you got to hear the strength of feeling in this, in this room as well. And it was interesting to hear councillor Smith talk about the disruption to the rights of way network that the NSIPS can create. But I think it's also important to highlight the impact that particularly solar farms can have on the enjoyment of the rights of way network. They can, in some instances, be proposed to come right up to the footpath, there could be fencing there, well, there would be fencing there of course to prevent people getting into the solar farm. So it's not just a disruption to that network that I think we need to be concerned about. It's the impact on the enjoyment of those networks and ensuring we have adequate buffer zones where solar farms are but our rights of way. And I'd just be interested in Mr Hall's view on the responsiveness, I suppose, of solar developers and how he views that concern around enjoyment of rights of way versus disruption of rights of way.
Thank you for the support.
Okay, anyone else in Cabinet wish to come in? Okay, happy to open it up to others. Councillor Spicer, as the member on the Local Access Forum, would you like to start off?
Thank you very much, Chairman, and happy birthday, Barry. Happy big birthday. It's very interesting, I was just reflecting, that the concerns that have been raised today and in the previous paper and often at the forum are about the challenges of keeping rights of way open, disruption to the network, we'll call it what we will. And one of the frustrations that I still have around our role as a county councillor and my role as a councillor is about the challenges of getting more rights of way, improving the rights of way network. And I'm not just talking about the big stuff like the King Charles coastal path, sorry, King Charles III coastal path, but the developments that are going on, housing and industry right across Suffolk, whether we've got the best systems to improve and expand the rights of way network and public access. And it's slightly frustrating. We have, I've talked to councillor West, we have our councillor, in the county council highways officers who respond to planning applications, we have rights of way officers who get involved in looking at planning applications. We still have two-tier local government, we are the highway authority and we're responsible for rights of way, but the district and borough councils are the planning authority. And if anything, it's one of the many good things that should come out of being a unitary authority, hopefully one, because otherwise, I don't know who's going to look after the Access Forum, but even if it had to be two, we're bringing together the planning decision-making package, it is a package with Section 106 and SILS. Bringing that together with our current responsibilities around highways and rights of way should do something better. But meanwhile, the forum is a cheerful little group, much enjoyable with site visits as well as meetings. The only place I still get given lunch in my county council world, which is very nice. No, yes, nobody else gives you lunch anywhere now, but that's, we get a sandwich, don't worry. So on your behalf, I hope I can assure you that the forum is marching on, walking on. But I do think unitary government will make this an opportunity, but we need to be stronger as a forum to make our voice heard as much as welcoming, the bringing together of all the planning functions, I think will make things a lot easier. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lockington.
Thank you, Chairman, and happy birthday. Can I say it's, I was interested in reading the report and going through the issues. And of course, from where I come, I was disappointed because I saw you mention something about a garden neighbourhood, but of course in Ipswich, we have the big garden neighbourhood we are building. And I brought to the attention last year of the meeting, and in the minutes from the meeting a year ago, it says, in response to the councillor's christening regarding a railway bridge in Ipswich still not being open, by whole advice that the use of the bridge was very much in the hands of the developer who needed to provide further information to the council before legal agreement that it could be used. He understood that the rights of way team were speaking with the developer at least every six weeks with them. The cabinet member for Ipswich's operation of highways and flooding reassured the councillor that he was also taking an interest and would be speaking to the relevant officers again in the coming weeks. Now, that was the minutes a year ago to, you know, and there is not a word in here. Can I just say, it's really difficult. You know, yesterday, I managed to get across on the footpath and met somebody who walked in a pair of really nice shoes, I was in my welly boots. So I said to him, you can't walk that way, and he said, well, I bet not, but you know, the question is, when are we going to do something about that and when will the forum actually visit and walk the route? Because the Fonerow Way is a very old route in Ipswich, it leads from the centre of Ipswich all the way up, I think to Wittenham. So it would be really useful to get that open. And we now have a.
We've got the question.
I think Andrew can answer that one. All I can say is the Local Access Forum were never consulted on the Ipswich plan at all, except for one small bit at the end of the process, but so I think Andrew can.
Yeah, thank you, Barry. This is not something that the forum has considered, councillor Lockington, over the reporting period. The original consultations for the Ipswich Gardens suburb were many years ago, before the Local Access Forum was really that involved, involved in that level of detail in the larger developments. I can only speak for the county council's role in this and my team's role in this, which breaks down mainly into the cycle bridge and footpath eighteen, which is the Fonerow Way. On the matter of the cycle bridge, this is, this is complex and the county council's working with the developer to try and resolve the outstanding issues with the bridge and the design, which you don't think are a problem, but the county council needs to be satisfied that it's in a condition that it can adopt through a Section 38 agreement. When the councils, and it's not been dealt with directly by my team, it's with structures and legal and so on, but when the county council can adopt the bridge and it's adopted, the footpath, footpath eighteen, which currently crosses a railway and has been temporarily diverted, will be extinguished because the public highway will be over the cycle bridge. So that deals with the cycle bridge element. Footpath eighteen, part of it goes through Broad Acres, which you'll know very well. I believe I heard, I've discussed with this recently, one of my managers, the definitive map manager, there's a desire to have that diverted. You know, we'll look at any consultation that comes in to divert footpath eighteen, but there needs to be a continuous public right of way either where it is or on an alternative route, possibly within the country park to the west of that site. So it's complex, nothing's going to happen quickly, you know, but we are treating it seriously and dealing with all the issues that we can in the rights of way and access team to actually make sense of the network there.
I think we've got to be careful not to be drawn into individual routes. If we've got individual routes, let's pick it up outside of this meeting because otherwise, I'm sure there are many more routes that lots of people will have questions on in various parts of Suffolk. Councillor Fleming, you are next.
Thank you very much. I just really wanted to thank you both for your work on assessing and looking after our footpaths and in particular, looking out for the threats to public enjoyment of footpaths through the encroachment by solar farms and associated infrastructure. If this goes too far, no one will even want to use a public footpath, let alone generate any new routes. So thank you very much.
Councillor Weller, you are next. Thank you, Chair. Yeah, thank you for the report. I was interested in what councillor Spicer said about the disruption to public rights of way when developments are carried out. But in your report, you say that you've been successful, or the team have been successful in pushing for Section 106 funding for public rights of way improvements. And I guess you're updated on that at the forum from time to time. But are you updated on problems with carrying out Section 106 schemes, perhaps due to land acquisition delays or any other problems? Just wondered if the forum is made aware and whether local members can be made aware when there are delays to schemes, when they're held up, and also what steps are being taken to overcome these difficulties? Thank you.
We, the forum doesn't get usually involved in individual cases. It's not, we have a broader strategy, so we'd put together, we'd work on a, like the Felixstowe area, we'd look at the plans, we'd talk to consultants and we'd put in our ideas, but how things have then progressed after, say, it being approved, we're not aware of if there are delays or anything. Presumably the rights of way team are, but it's, we're not involved in individual cases as such.
Thank you very much. Yes, you want to come back?
If I may, so that means a particular, I wasn't going to be parochial, but let's just say Stowe Market as a whole or Felixstowe as a whole. If you've developed a strategy or a plan for Felixstowe, I think you're saying you're not really updated on how it's going. Is that right? Because that surprises me. When large developments take place, I would have hoped that the forum would be made aware if there were problems in delivery.
I think Andrew can.
Yes, councillor Weller, the Local Access Forum gets involved in the larger developments at a strategic level. So you mentioned Felixstowe. The Local Access Forum had a site fill it to the Felixstowe Northern, I think they're all called garden suburbs now, aren't they? To that site and had a presentation from the local planner, the planner dealing with that, made their responses and suggestions for improvements. But they don't get involved in the day-to-day ebb and flow of consultations and discussions between council officers and planners and developers around making those improvements. And there is an immense amount of work that has to go into that, but the forum is kept out of that.
Councillor Ladd.
Thank you, Chairman. I was just going to ask Mr Hall about the King Charles III England path in my division. I think you mentioned Benica, but I'm happy to take that online, offline.
Councillor Stringer.
Thank you, and happy birthday, Mr Hall. I wasn't expecting this one to be a sort of really interesting debate, but actually it's turning into an interesting debate purely because of what's been said by many of the members, including councillor Spicer. Hundred percent agree with councillor Spicer in that I'd love to see the forum getting more involved in being aspirational about new routes. Now, the nirvana that councillor Spicer was acknowledging that could happen under a unitary council already exists at Mid Suffolk District Council, where we hire a highways engineer to design cycling and walking schemes for us so we can help speed up the process. And that we have done. The problem with that is there has to be a second stage of design, a final design carried out, which has resulted in a backlog. We have a massive backlog now in Mid Suffolk of schemes that are funded and designed and ready for the final design, but the final design is taking somewhere between nine months and a year. So I'm looking for new roles for the Local Access Forum. Could it be possible that we hand the backlog of schemes over to the Local Access Forum for them to be able to triage and put in order as to the most effective and those that should be funded first?
I'm not sure that's a fair question.
I think we are, we are, we are, we are members who, some of us retired, some of them have day jobs, we do have subgroups, but a lot of our focus, as I've said, has been on work on the national strategic infrastructure projects, you know, looking through those, going through all the documents, producing comments to the developers and things like, you know, basically, where are we going to get the time if you gave us a list of two hundred schemes that are waiting in the wings? You know, we have three, four meetings a year, but you know, there are other things in their lives, other people's lives. It's hard enough sometimes to get a steering group together because somebody's on holiday, you know. We are quite literally fully occupied with what's going on at the moment.
I don't think, I don't think the Local Access Forum has to justify itself at all. And that's, that's, that's not the direction of travel. We're, you know, we're very happy with the work that's done. Councillor West, you want to?
Yeah, and just on that point, the blockage that councillor Stringer talks about is another part of the whole process that, yeah, ought to be addressed, but not, as I said at the beginning of the meeting, the questions this afternoon should be on the responsibilities of the Access Forum and their report. And we can easily get into a whole range of topics that obviously are matters to be dealt with elsewhere, but I take councillor Stringer's point, but perhaps we'll take that forward separately as a separate issue.
I haven't got any other hands up, so councillor West, can you just remind Cabinet what we're being asked? So councillor West, can you just remind Cabinet what we're being asked to decide today, please?
Yep, sure. Turning to page twenty-one, printed out under recommendation that is number two, the Cabinet is being asked to accept the Suffolk Local Access Forum's annual report twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and the report's recommendation to confirm the actions that the council is taking in response to those recommendations.
Thank you, Cabinet. Are we in favour of that recommendation? Can we have a show of hands? Yes, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. And once again, thank you so much for joining us on your eightieth birthday, and I hope you have a very enjoyable evening celebrating. Okay, and next up is the twenty-five, twenty-six revenue budget and the quarter-two forecast outturn. I'm going to hand over to councillor Smith.
Chairman, perhaps I've had it a little easy over the last year and more in reporting quarterly to Cabinet about the council's progress against budgets. In twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, we had an overall surplus despite many pressures from diverse directions. Alas, that is not the case this year with the usual quarterly detailed report showing what is a worryingly difficult position with a prediction by the year's end of an overspend close to twenty-one million pounds. Now, I could say today that in percentage terms, the overspend is small, which it is, but with our reserves under considerable pressure and our overall financial position affected by a predicted designated schools grant negative reserve, let's be straightforward and call it an overdraft, of approaching one hundred and seventy million pounds. And the possibility of that figure rising higher, not just in this financial year, but continuing its upward trend next year. The truth is that our finances are under considerable pressure and any predicted overspend of our budget adds to the complexity and difficulty of the overall situation. Now, we do continue to wait for announcements on SEND matters and other social care changes from government. We should have heard by now, but government has delayed revealing its ideas and reforms. And we don't expect any announcements until at least January. And further than that, we know that a government definition of January could mean a month or two after that. And it's in this precise area where the seat of our problems lie. We have to increase our throughput and complete more educational health and care plans on time and improve our all-round SEND performance. I am confident we are doing just that. And we will hear welcome news, welcome and positive news in just a couple of months' time. But improvement comes at a cost, especially when it's combined with the complexities of coping with ever-grearing demand. And it's almost the definition of a perfect problem. We've previously made funding available to recruit ninety-four extra staff, and these people are on in post now and delivering results now, but not as fast as we would all wish because of this seemingly inexorable rise in numbers and demand. I'm very well aware that more children are coming into our care and that some of these young people have challenging multiple needs which require careful, sympathetic, and yes, complex care arrangements, often met at alarmingly high cost. We as councillors are all corporate parents, and it's our business and prime duty to fulfil our responsibilities and provide this care, however complex and expensive, with cost being of secondary concern. It is right to say that, but balancing demand and available financial resources becomes ever more complicated. And as a standalone county council, we just don't have all the solutions needed. Of course, it's worth stressing yet again that this problem is not faced in Suffolk alone, but by virtually all upper-tier authorities in England. The pips are really squeaking, and those squeaks become louder and more shrill each year. That noise is becoming unbearable, and only central government can lower the decibel level, reduce the squeeze effect and reset the situation. I hope earnestly that their ideas, when we have them, will be ambitious, positive and helpful to us. If not, social care needs and its associated costs will subsume much of local government, even before the point of actual local government reform is reached. We've previously made substantial investments through both our revenue and capital budgets. We're providing extra in-house placement capability to avoid using the external market, who provide their services at external prices, sometimes at eye-wateringly high cost. Eight more specialist in-house places are being delivered now, although some of them will not become available until the next financial year. So making budget savings in this area is very difficult at present, and I cannot offer any easy answers or excuses for our overspend. Now, I would say to Cabinet and those in the chamber today and others as well that we are doing all we can to cope with difficult and demanding circumstances, but that the future outlook for the remainder of this financial year is highly challenging, and the prospect for the two remaining years of this authority is far from easy. I also have to report overspends in other parts of our budget. Adult social care is predicting an overspend of approaching five million pounds. Now, this is not welcome, but I do believe that most of this overspend can be mitigated in the remaining months of this financial year. But the common problems here of rising demand and increased costs mustn't be underestimated. Elsewhere, we face higher-than-expected costs imposed on us by the pay rise for our staff agreed nationally and the effects of an even higher pay settlement for members of our fire and rescue service. Also, as I reported last quarter, we're expecting lower-than-forecast savings from our Fit-for-the-Future scheme, which has been affected by the anticipated changes in the shape and form of future local government. Much work is being done in this area as further, more sensitivity-based figures are being prepared as savings targets in both next year's and the twenty twenty-seven, twenty-eight budget. The other shortfall is from the underachievement of dividend paid from our wholly-owned companies. A detailed report from an external consultant was commissioned earlier this year into the Vertas Group after twelve years of them trading successfully. And that report is due to be given to me at the end of this week. It's my priority, after this cabinet meeting is behind us, to carefully read and fully digest that report and propose any necessary action. We've been well-served by Vertas, Concertis and Opus, but in these difficult times, we need the annual dividend they pass to us to be both at a dependable level and larger. Chairman, this hasn't been the easiest of reports, and I can't pretend all in financial terms is sweetness and light. But there are substantial parts of our organisation who are performing well and keeping to budget. And here, the growth highways and infrastructure directorate deserves special praise. I'm all too aware that we can always spend money quickly and productively on our highway system, and that this of all our services is used, enjoyed and criticised by almost all of us. I'd very much like to find some extra money for increased investment in our roads and associated services, and I'll try my best to do so for the twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven budget, but the combined pressures explained above may preclude that from becoming a reality. We'll have to wait and see. Our financial difficulties are very likely to continue. Quarter-three results may not show much improvement, but I have a certain degree of optimism that the final quarter's results will pull round many of the problems I've admitted to today and enable this council to continue to provide a good level of service across all the areas for which we bear responsibility for the ultimate good of all Suffolk's residents and businesses.
Thank you very much. Happy to open it up to Cabinet College, who just worked along the line. Councillor Hofstra, do you want to go first?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. At quarter one, I reported on the relatively good position for ASC at the time, but I said that Suffolk, like other councils, was experiencing high levels of adult social care demand which could turn into spending commitments. I anticipated that we had faced a difficult year, and this has indeed been the case at halfway point. ASC has moved into a forecast overspend position that is one point two percent above the budget. Although this may seem like a minor change, considering we manage thousands of customers and commission millions of hours of care, and whilst having a statutory duty to meet care needs, it does translate into a projected overspend of four point five million against the budget of three hundred and seventy-three point seven million, a significant sum. The issues lie within the care purchasing budget, which is forecast to be overspent by four point nine million. This is caused by a combination of more customers needing care, with quarter two seeing a new record level, plus the full-year cost impact on this year of the rising customers seen in the second half of last year, and an increase in the average cost per customer. Without transformation programmes being in place, impact of this would be much more significant. Our two programmes, People First Independent Lives, will set a combined saving target of fifteen million for this year. The current forecast is that this will be exceeded by five million pounds. This continues to be a success story of promoting greater independence and reducing reliance on traditional care services. We face systematic challenges in adult social care that are prevalent across the country. Local authorities cannot resolve this alone, no matter how effective our transformation programmes are. It needs government intervention and new funding for both in-year pressures and for the years ahead. We will see what the autumn budget later this month will bring. In the meantime, we are not sitting on our hands. I've already talked about our delivery of the transformation programmes, but we will seek to do more. Recovery plans are being drawn up to see if we can go further and faster, both to try and reduce the current level of overspend, but also to avoid the need for a further cost pressure for next year. Whilst the scale of the issue is not consistent across the county, with West Suffolk seeing the largest increase in customers, the response will be countywide, leveraging the size and the scale of the countywide authority. Outside of the care purchasing, there is better news of an overall point four million forecast underspend. Within the pay budgets are expected to be underspent by point eight million across ASC, which is despite a forecast overspend in area social work teams. There is planned to be a move of pay budgets later in the year to better align them to the staffing establishment. The point eight million underspend is less than previous years, but reflects improved levels of recruitment. The Housing Related Support Service has successfully introduced new contracts which exceeded the three millions of savings targeted the last couple of years by point two million, whilst keeping to the planned service levels. There is also a forecast overspend within Cassius contract of point six million, which comes within the re-enabling equipment assistive technology line of the budget, and is driven by the success of the programme in getting more people with digital devices. As part of the recovery plans mentioned earlier, we will look as to whether there are any efficiencies that could be made without having detrimental impact on the savings that this initiative delivers. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Councillor Bennett.
Thank you. So as you know, we look after children who through no fault of their own need to come into our care, and these children come into care for many reasons, from a diverse range of backgrounds. Sometimes it's because their family is having problems or cannot provide for their needs, there has been a bereavement, or the child is at risk of harm, abuse or neglect. And as such, we care for children who have wide-ranging and often very complex needs. The forecasted core budget overspend against children's social care has increased by one point six million over the last quarter to eight point two million. And this overspend reflects the continuing and increasing cost pressure within our cohort of children with disabilities and our children in care. This is driven by an increase in the number of children coming into our care and the increasing complexity needs of those children and the rising cost of private care providers. This is not unique to Suffolk. We know that nationally, spend on children in care has increased about sixty-five percent in the last five years. And here in Suffolk, through our existing efficiency in the work we've been doing, we've been able to limit this increase to thirty-nine point three percent, which is still significant. But we face these same pressures locally, and we know our neighbouring counties are also facing similar challenges. As a corporate parent, it is both our legal and moral duty to ensure the right children are being brought into care at the right time with the right package of support. For most of our children in care, we would want them to be cared for in a family-based environment or in foster homes. But locally as well as nationally, we're currently facing a critical shortage of foster carers with an estimated shortfall of six thousand carers nationwide. Where possible, we also want to keep children close to they would call home, and that might be family, friends or where they go to school. So when it comes to talking about children who have highly complex needs, they need the right support, and to do so can be costly. To give an example, some of our most vulnerable children in bespoke care in a private residential home can cost upwards of fifteen thousand pounds per week. And we're seeing private care costs rise year on year. They can be double or triple what we might pay for our in-house care, and in some cases we've seen as much as twenty percent increase just in the last year. And I make no apology for seeking to provide the right support for our most vulnerable children, as a corporate parent, we must constantly ask ourselves, would this be good enough for my child? The service is working hard to bring down costs, but it will take time for these measures to make material change to the current level of spend. We're working with families at the earliest point and as challenges emerge, to support them, to build resilience and access support within their communities to prevent escalation of need and through an enhanced universal offer. We are supporting partner agencies to refer the right children for our support at the right time through the development of the integrated front door. And the Families First remodel of the whole service is underway, reviewing how we use our family hubs, edge-of-care services and our integrated front door to have a fully joined-up corporate parenting service. This will include continuing to embed the empower value in care model, which has already realised annual savings of two million pounds by identifying the needs of young people and how, where the needs of young people are now met in different, less costly home settings. We continue to build our own sufficiency through going our in-house children's homes estate, through recruitment and retention of our amazing foster carers, and to reduce reliance on externally purchased placements in children's homes. We also continue to use national levers where we have them to lobby government for further support, which is so clearly needed up and down the country. And we continue to work to bring this spend down, to provide best value for money for our taxpayers, but we know this will take time against a backdrop of rising local and national pressures and needs. And most importantly, we must continue to put the needs of our most vulnerable children, young people and their families first. It is the right thing to do and it's the responsible thing to do.
Thanks very much. Councillor Reed.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and thank you, councillor Bennett. My areas of responsibility within the Children and Young People's Directorate covers education, learning, inclusion, school travel and schools. Together, these services form the backbone of our work to ensure every child in Suffolk has the best possible start in life. But this important work comes at a price. Right now, we're forecasting a one million pound overspend against our core budget, and as councillor Smith has cited, a seventy-two point nine million overspend on our dedicated schools grant. This reflects the national pressures we face, particularly in supporting children with special education needs and disabilities. I'm pleased to report, though, that our home-to-school transport budget continues to be underspent. Savings achieved through retended contracts last year are being used wisely to Savings achieved through retended contracts last year are being used wisely to offset pressures elsewhere. We now have a net underspend of one and a half million in school travel, which is helping us to balance the 2.6 million overspend within inclusion. Now, much of that pressure comes from our educational psychology service and SEND statutory services, and these have been instrumental in clearing the backlog of education and healthcare plans. Seventy percent of assessments are now held face-to-face, up from 40% in April, and more plans are being issued faster and with fewer reviews outstanding. It's also important to say that the increase in plans issued is not at the detriment of , to the quality of those plans. We now have quality assurance processes in place which have been co-produced to ensure consistency and continuous improvement. We're also reviewing Activities Unlimited, a service which provides short breaks and leisure opportunities for children and young people with SEND. It's a vital service that helps families, builds confidence and promotes inclusion, and we're looking at how we can create a more joined-up approach which could reduce duplication and strengthen early intervention. Please be assured that no changes will be made to that service and Activities Unlimited without a full consultation with families and partners. Turning to the Dedicated Schools Grant, our 72 million overspend reflects a national issue. The local government association estimates councils are carrying a combined 5.2 billion DSG deficit, or at least forecast that by the end of 2026. Some, like West Sussex and Gloucestershire, are already forecasting deficits in the hundreds of millions, warning of potential insolvency if the situation continues. The High Needs Block funding formula simply hasn't kept place with demand, and the statutory override that keeps deficits off our balance sheets is only a temporary fix. In Suffolk, we receive a particularly low level of funding compared to national and regional averages, because allocations are still based on outdated historical spending. It is a situation that needs urgent attention. Again, something that has been mentioned by councillor Smith. And of course, the continued and now frustrating delay of the much-awaited government SEND white paper leaves us all in a state of limbo. SEND reform on a national scale is essential if we are to make the system sustainable. And to close, Mr Chairman, in the meantime, myself, councillor Bennett, plus our dedicated staff and leadership team will continue to do what Suffolk does best, and that's looking after and working with our schools and families, investing in early education and driving improvement in our statutory services. We remain focused on delivering timely, high-quality support for every child who needs it. Thank you.
Very much. councillor Chancy.
Thank you, Chair. I'm pleased to report that in my portfolio, we are coming in on target. There are three key programmes of work which I want to talk about, which continue to feature prominently in this area. First, the Homes for Ukraine programme. The council carried forward 8.8 million of government funding from last year and received a further 0.6 million this year. This is helping us to meet our responsibilities to host families and individuals and to support those extending their visas under the Ukraine Permission Extension Scheme, for which there is no additional government funding. Secondly, the Household Support Fund totaling 9 million for 2025 to 2026. Around 4.7 million of that provides free school meal vouchers during school holidays. 2.6 million supports residents directly through the local welfare assistance scheme, and the remaining 1.7 million is distributed through district, boroughs, voluntary sector partners to help with housing, food and other essential needs. Turning to libraries, by the end of quarter two, we had spent 0.4 million of the 1.8 million library transition budget, bringing it in-house. The remaining funds are fully committed and will be spent by the end of financial year, that's the 1.4 million. It will support the ongoing transition and review programme and investment in new IT infrastructure. On the capital programme, the Bungie Library Improvements remains on track and on budget. Bury St Edmunds Library enhancements are due to complete this year, and the Stone Market Library's extension project has been delayed slightly, with spend now expected to begin in April 2026. In summary, these programmes continue to provide vital support to Suffolk residents, helping with the cost of living, supporting those displaced by conflict and ensuring our libraries remain vibrant community spaces. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks very much. councillor Wiles.
Thank you, Chairman, and if I may, I start with public protection. At quarter two, the Fire and Public Safety Directorate has a slightly improved picture from quarter one, following a recovery plan that has been put in place. This will continue to address the forecasted overspend of 0.6 million pounds. This is largely attributable to Suffolk Fire and Rescue Service and has arisen through a combination of increased inflationary costs on premises utilities, fleet maintenance, supplies and support costs, as well as additional staffing costs which rose in Q1 due to the driest spring conditions on record. Trading Standards is forecasting a small underspend for 2025-2026, which relates to staffing, and the Joint Emergency Planning Unit is forecasting to deliver to budget at this quarter. The Director Recovery Plan is working well and continues to examine its costs regularly and closely, taking every opportunity to mitigate any overspends and continue to improve its financial position. Moving on to public health for Q2, Public Health and Communities is forecasting to spend 36.7 million of public health grant for this year. This is 1.6 million pounds above the allocation of 35.1 million, and will be covered by a planned drawdown from the Public Health Grant Reserve. The majority of the drawdown, around 1.3 million, relates to the children and young people's 0-19 service, supporting ongoing cost pressures in school nursing, health visiting. But however, the latest forecast suggests this may be closer to 0.8 million, and so this may reduce the expected drawdown. Importantly, this means that there is no overall budgetary impact on the council's finances for 2025 to 2026. A public health grant continues to fund a wide range of services promoting health improvement and protection, from sexual health and substance misuse services to health protection, early years support and community wellbeing. Overall, the Directorate remains on track to deliver a balanced position within the ring-fenced public health grant whilst maintaining essential prevention and protection programmes for the residents of Suffolk. Thank you.
Thank you very much. councillor Chambers.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Waste Management is reporting a balanced budget position for this financial year. This has been achieved by drawing down, as planned, 0.7 million from the 1.3 million reserve established in the last financial year. Reserve was created to fund expected cost pressures for this financial year, which relates to a combination of increase in waste levels, insurances and business rates, and this position is an improvement by, of one, sorry, improvement of 0.2 million from the forecast given at Q1, largely due to a reduction in garden waste brown bins as a result of prolonged dry summer. All other areas of my portfolio are expected to report a balanced budget. Thank you.
councillor Ratt.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'll be brief, as the NSIP team is predominantly funded through planning performance agreements on a full-cost recovery basis, and the funding for devolution and local government reorganisation is very specific. But we know that councils across the country are struggling financially, and Suffolk is no exception, with an aging population and acute need within CYP that we've heard about. 77p and rising in every pound is going on people's services. These are obviously vital services that we offer, but they represent a clear challenge that require national reform and fairer funding for rural areas like ours. The impact on people's services is one of the key reasons why I've long advocated for local government reorganisation, and moreover why One Unitary Authority is the only option for Suffolk that makes financial and logical sense. One Suffolk would entail no disaggregation of essential services and a smarter, simpler and better option for Suffolk's residents that doesn't risk the most vulnerable members of our community facing postcode lotteries or falling between the cracks of different authorities. In June, cabinet agreed to transfer 1.9 million from the county council's risk reserve to the corporate priorities reserve to cover their necessary capacity, expertise and resources to best deliver devolution and LGR in parallel to an accelerated timetable. This is in addition to the £145,000 of funding for LGR and the £1 million capacity funding for devolution across Norfolk and Suffolk from MHCLG. This money is being used for essential planning, which has included producing our One Suffolk Business Case in collaboration with Grant Thornton, engagement work with residents, town and parish councils and stakeholders, and for the additional staff in corporate services and highways. As we know, our One Suffolk proposal has gone into the government, and if it gives it the green light, would save the county 39.4 million pounds each and every year, which could be used amongst other things to enhance local services like highways and social care, alongside investing 40 million pounds into improving our market town centres. Thank you.
Thank you very much. and councillor West.
Thank you, Chair. I'll talk about the revenue side of operational highways. We're on course to overspend by about half a million pounds a year. That's made up of two things that you can see on page 173A and B. Half of the overspend is due to increasing the frequency of cyclical drainage, largely in response to Section 19 reports, but not solely because of Section 19 reports, just because of areas that are being tackled that ought to be given that priority. And that's cumulative, so that's not necessarily relating to work that was done in the second quarter, but a build-up, so we're now able to crystallise the overspend. And then also, half of the projected overspend against budget is with regard to the additional cut in urban areas that is delivered by district councils on behalf of the county council. After talking with the districts, increased that this year, and that makes up about £200,000 of the overspend. We're hoping that when it comes to the third quarter, that's at the point we usually start to see some kind of surplus in the licensing and billing of work on the highway, but let's hope that that takes a little bit of pressure off the current projections of half a million pounds.
Thanks very much, and just to touch very briefly on corporate services. Corporate service is forecasting an overall underspend of about £400,000 in total. How's that made up? Well, the key underspend is in governance, legal and insurance, which is about £700,000, which is made up from staff vacancy in legal services, registrars, overachieving income from ceremonies and reduction in spend on post-mortems in the coroner's service. Customer experience in digital has underspent by about £350,000, mainly savings from an IT contracts and IT department overachieving on income targets. But the underspend has been offset, well, I'm not sure if offset's the right word, has been balanced by an overspend in corporate property and assets and investments, which has been driven actually by demolition works, one-off demolition costs around Boston Lodge in Lowestoft, the Drill Tower at the former Stone Market Fire Station and works at the Thromas Centre in Saxmundom, which is why we've come to an overall underspend of about £400,000. Okay, happy to open it up for comments from others. As usual, councillor Fairclough-Mutton.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Chairman. I have two questions, if I may, starting with councillor Smith. On page 100, nice round number, paragraph 76, I wish to pay testament to the head of Economic Development, he left earlier this year, he was an excellent councillor. Given, of course, we do have local government reorganisation taking place in the next two and a half years, and economic development is a fundamental part of the districts and Ipswich Borough's activities, I wondered what balance has been given on the necessity of this money to promote business against the spending of taxpayers' money wisely when many roles will be rationalised across the districts, the borough and the county going forward? That's my first question. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your positive words. I realise all that's been said today in balance is not good news, but we are trying tremendously with, across this organisation, to address our overspend, and as I said in my speech, I am confident that to some extent we will do so by the end of the year. Economic development spend is particularly important, because if it's targeted properly, it will create jobs and upskill people, both of which are highly desirable. And under our present team, I think we're doing all we can in that area. Now, we did have some funds which were transferred to Suffolk County Council at the end of the New Anglia LEAP, so we have a little buffer there, which we are using to incentivise, to provide some incentivisation to companies across Suffolk. It's also being guided by the Suffolk Business Board under the chairmanship of Mark Pendleton, and we are having a joint meeting shortly with the Norfolk Business Board, because the future will be under a mayor for this area, and it's important that we present him or her, whoever is the successful candidate, with a ready-made, well-thought-through scheme of how there are various initiatives in Norfolk and Suffolk to be taken forward in an oven-ready way to encourage economic development as we all want to see. Thank you.
Thank you. And the second and final question, welcome the fact that the ASC transformation programmes continue to overperform the £15 million target, indeed likely to hit 20 million overall. Question for councillor Bennett, the story, of course, is very different under CYP in the transformation programmes. Turning to paragraph 47 on page 94, a £2.2 million savings target relating to CYP transformation appears to be, of course, and now not expected to deliver in year as it was before. What is the internal reason for that, and when can we expect that transformation target to be achieved? Thank you.
Hi, thank you councillor Fairclough-Mutton. I think the transformation in CYP is in a very different place for lots of reasons. It's very much earlier in its journey than the ASC transformation, and it's going at the pace at the moment. The 2.2 referred to was a transformation programme aimed at reducing numbers of children in care, and that was something that is prior to our current DCS joining and around the time when I took over the portfolio too. Since that time, it's been a turnabout because of so many pressures that this cannot be achieved, because actually what we have to do is make sure if children need our help, that we bring them into our care, and reducing numbers of children in care is not the right thing to do. So that's entirely what that amount related to.
May I just add to that, if I may be allowed to do so? councillor Fairclough-Mutton will know only too well about the role of the Transformation Board, as you used to chair that. It meets monthly, and we look once a quarter at ASC and once a quarter at CYP. And I agree with what councillor Bennett has said. I would say in absolute terms, the maturity of the CYP transformation efforts is about two years behind that of ASC, and ASC is now coming up with substantial goods ahead of target, and we have some hopes that will continue into the next financial year. The particular problems with CYP are noted, but we do monitor them carefully, and in some areas, there is an underperformance, but there is still good work continuing in the Directorate, indeed in both Directories.
Thank you. councillor Stringer.
Could you also answer the question, when do you expect the savings to be achieved?
Well, I think we explained that the transformations is not valid anymore. I think you've heard that, haven't you? Do you want to add anything else?
So with the 2.2, that's not going to be achieved. What we're on now is a different route and branch transformation programme that is going to take it a significant amount of time, because there are so many factors, not least we are still waiting for the bill to come from government, which I believe will receive broad assent in January about Children's Health and Wellbeing Board. We're waiting for the bill from government about what's going to happen with the Police and Crime Bill, because that will have impact on some things that lead into children's services such as criminal exploitation, domestic abuse, and we're also waiting to hear from government what's going to be happening with SEN. So we're working at pace and we're doing what we can, but there's an awful lot of unknowns as well.
Yeah, I just want to add something with regards to transformation programmes. Given ASC's experience and the maturity of their transformation programmes, what's really important with transformation programmes is that they flex with the time and what's happening at the present time. So you may set a transformation programme which was right at that point of time, but circumstances change, and it's important that you are able to reflect that in the transformation programme in order to flex and change your programme according to the time at which you are currently delivering your services. Not least when it's such important services that you are supporting very vulnerable people, you need to have to build in that flex, and it's the skills of the team in order to do that, so that's really important. So we have to change directions. You admit this, sometimes it's not working in the right way, and then therefore we will change the programmes to deliver in the right way for the right people at the right time. That's really important.
Of course, we've had to work around government priorities that can also change. So, councillor Stringer.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, obviously sobering set figures and, you know, obviously at difficult times. Given all the pressures now on senior management of things like LGR and devolution, and needing to go through an awful lot of change, the fit for the future savings identified in here are predicted to be two and a half million short. Are we confident that we can make these necessary savings as we go forward?
Could you clarify a little? I'm not quite certain if you mean, could we make the necessary savings within this financial year? We've said we're not going to make two and a half million of those savings from £5 million, but there's two and a half where we think we can still make the savings.
Yeah, I think it was clarity about, and are we confident we can then go on to save those other two and a half million, given that we're having to expand senior management to accommodate things like LGR and devolution?
Thank you for the clarification. The answer is yes. I wouldn't say 100% yes, but I would say a high percentage of yes, but we are also looking to put some savings in the 2627 budget, which we will... I can't remember the words I used in my report, but we will look at very, very carefully before they go into the budget mix for next year.
Thanks. Councillor Leiva.
Thank you, Chairman. I think some of the questions or some of the notes I had have probably already been answered, but just a really quick one just to start with, kind of just a nod will probably do it. But we talked about SEN reforms, been waiting for with the bills coming through. Is family hub reform, is that still in a similar position in terms of waiting for some more guidance from government around that?
We're still waiting for the Children's Health and Wellbeing Bill. I mean, there has been things trickling out about best start in life, but we're still waiting for some more detail about that.
Okay, that was my quick question. And I'll go to... Thank you. I was pleased to hear from councillor Reed regarding Activities Unlimited as well, that's something, you know, that I personally think, I've had experience of excellent service and look forward to that being looked at and hopefully maybe expanded to kind of cover a wider area around Suffolk. Sometimes there's some pockets that are lost within that. But essentially, I wanted to go on to say, I mean, it's always tricky when we're here talking about, like I think councillor Bennett, councillor Reed, councillor Smith said, when we're talking about vulnerable children, young people, to kind of reduce them down to numbers and all this sort of things, and it always feels quite awkward and hard to do. But I just wanted to kind of cover what we're saying about the children's homes and the increase in having to do externally placed, external residential homes and the cost involved. I totally appreciate if that's needed to be done right now, that has to be done. Obviously, some of it is because of building delays, you know, as a result of that. So is there anything that can be done, you know, to make changes on how this is budgeted for in the future, to kind of reduce these delays and obviously also to bring more in-house where possible? I think that's my question.
Yeah, so two things on that, and I haven't got my computer with me because it's with IT at the moment, so I would normally have it on a screen, but our sufficiency programme when it comes to children's home is continuous, so we've had new homes coming online in the last two years and the last year, some coming on very shortly and some going on. The delays in general have been to do with issues that when the work started, as with any building project, once you sort of take the top off, you find something that needs dealing with, and I believe there's been some areas where there have been some holdouts with the planning process, dealing with queries that have been raised. But the sufficiency is not just about children's home, the work that Empower have been doing with us is making sure that we've got the right young person or child in the right place. So we're looking at sufficiency through the system, so it's not just about those high-cost homes and making sure we've got those very specialist places for children with complex needs. It's about making sure that we're doing everything we can to support our foster carers, retain them, recruit more, and then going further down, it's about making sure we're doing everything we can at that really early stage to help families become resilient to try and prevent children coming into care. So it's sufficiency through the whole piece, but it is without doubt those very high-cost placements that are causing us the trouble and the delays. There have been a couple, but the sufficiency programme is a long journey, there's some that's happened, there's some to happen. So you're on the Corporate Parenting Board as well, so I think you've had an update on it recently, and we will do again in the future, future too.
Thank you. Councillor Welling.
Thank you, Chair. We see more and more in the local press about injuries to pedestrians in town centres. Can I have a figure for the cost of dealing with claims for trips and falls? This would be the staff costs and the amount paid out in the last 12 months. Is that... I'm not expecting that to be available, obviously, today.
So, Welling, can I just say, there was a very good photograph of you in Stone Market looking at a cracked pavement, but behind you parked on the pavement was a red delivery van that had driven over the pavement, was parked on the pavement. Maybe Mid Suffolk District Council would like to enforce the parking on the pavement, which would help the road, the pavement not get so damaged, which you are now taking photographs about and complaining about. So maybe you'd like to speak to your local district council about enforcing that, but I'm sure we can get the figure for you at some point in the future.
Yeah, well, I did have a local district councillor with me at the time, and we did remark upon that, but of course, there are economic disbenefits too in our town centres if they're not safe and attractive, but never mind. A question about new school buildings, if I may. The paper tells us that there have been slippage in the new school building programme, due in part to slower-than-anticipated housing completion, so that obviously the need for the new school is put off into the future a bit. And I'm just wondering what the short-term and long-term effects on revenue and capital might be. For instance, if SIL funding is agreed, which it often is for new school buildings, if the building is delayed and there's a higher capital cost, does the SIL money go up? Is there an additional cost of home-to-school transport if the school is delayed? I'm not looking for detailed figures. Are there these...
In principle, yeah, so no, you're absolutely right to identify the issue and the delays and sadly not.
Sadly not.
The money doesn't go up?
No, right, thank you.
So... Sorry, I'm into brevity.
So does that mean then that the shortfall is greater when you build it, and that's got to be met by county council capital programme, and therefore interest payments on borrowing and so on?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. We haven't got any other questions, so councillor Smith, could you just remind Cabinet what we've been asked to decide today, please?
Well, thank you, colleagues, for all your contributions and for the questions today. I make no bones, this is a difficult report, but I think we've been absolutely honest and upfront in explaining where the problems lie and what we will be doing over the next five months now before the end of the financial year to try and bring that figure of overspend down. We are being asked today to note on page 86, paragraph 9, little a through to little g.
Thank you very much. Cabinet, regarding the recommendation on page 86, are we all in favour of that recommendation? Can we have a show of hands, please? Thank you, that's unanimous. Okay, thank you very much. That does conclude today's meeting. If I can just ask councillors, please take your belongings with you and your paperwork and rubbish, and if you could put your microphones, smart cards in the box at the end of that row, that would be very helpful. And thank you very much. The next meeting is on Tuesday, the 2nd of December. Thank you.